He's fully aware of.
Kristin, we see you sitting back there acting like you know that technology. Better get my agenda. Hey Hector, can you help me with my agenda?
Do you want a paper one?
Yeah, I'm gonna get a paper one too.
You can just use that.
I can share it. I'm gonna get a pen because I have one in my office. It's in the office. I brought my bag, gavel and all. I just left it in the office. Hey Hector, can I still get the packet up? Just can I get the packet on the on the screen? I use the agenda to follow, but sometimes I like to read the motions in the packet. You get a lot of exercise running between all the technicals.
Have to be Hector and Lucero.
My bother. Is that where you go to get it?
You go on the website?
Forgive me, everybody. It'll be just a second. It's it's not credible if we can't if we can't get it. Oh, look at you. I got it. Thank you, sir. Are you ready, Hector?
Ready there.
We'll go ahead and call the talent city council regular meeting February 21st, 2024 to order roll call, please.
Counselor Penemara.
Here.
Counselor. Greater.
Here.
Counselor Castizo.
Here.
Counselor Byers.
Here.
Counselor Parra Miller.
Here.
Mayor Erispot.
Here.
Mayor, you have a forum.
Thank you. Just want to welcome everybody. It's so exciting to see a room full of presumably residents and visitors. And thank you for joining us this evening. The next item on the agenda is, oh, I just want to also recognize our liaison from Jackson County. Commissioner Daughter, always good to see you. Thank you for your service to talent. So with that, the next item on the agenda is additions and corrections to the agenda.
Counselor Perry Miller. I know that there's a speaker in the audience who I'd like to add at some point in the agenda, who would like to talk about a potential letter of support from Rogue World Music. I'm not sure quite where would be the best place to put her. But it would be nice if she didn't have to wait all the way to a new business if possible.
Yep, we have a pretty heavy load on unfinished business. So if it pleases the council, I'll go ahead and put her in as 7.1. So that just just before we take on the rest of the unfinished business. Any objections to that? Alright, so gonna add Rogue World Music to as item 7.1. Okay. Anything else? Alrighty. Are there any objections to the addition? Saying none. You know what? I actually I have to, I believe the the last time we talked about it, it was a a motion to accept the changes. I think it wasn't you, Dave, that I talked to about that? Maybe not. Alright, well, I'm gonna do it this time and then I'm gonna check it out because I vaguely remember and I could have talked to anybody about it.
Point of order.
Yep.
Should I? I know when this speaker comes up to speak, I will be recusing myself because of a conflict of interest. Should I recuse myself from the vote on the amendment to the agenda?
On the adding it to the agenda, we'll just do it for good measure. Yeah, yep. So I'll entertain a motion for the addition on the agenda. Counselor Perry Miller. I move to approve the agenda amended. For a second. I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Any oppose? Alright, motion carries and and Counselor Byers recused herself. Alright, the next item on the agenda is community announcements. Hector?
Set this meeting.
Gary?
Nothing to add. I have a few comments under to be made in the report.
Very good. Anybody else? Alright, saying none, we'll go ahead and move on to speakers heard on non-agenda items. Are there any speaker request forms? Yeah, I think they're all on agenda items. Let me just take a look. Nope, they're on non-agenda items. Thank you, Hector, for being on top of that. Let's go ahead and call Jerry Howke to the podium. Jerry, can you please state your name and city for the record?
Thank you. Jerry Howke, live at 140 Oak Valley Drive in Talent. And proudly so to say that after living in Ashland for so long. I am Jerry Howke. I'm the president of Oak Valley HOA. You've seen me before, so I'm sure that that's you understand that. I'm here requesting you to consider returning Oak Valley back to a single-family medium-density zoning. Our community was established at the 55-plus HUD community with CCNR stating only single-story, single-family, two-to-three-bedroom stick-built homes are allowed. This has provided a challenge for the owners as we have had to rebuild, of course, after the Almeida fire. Our lots on the average are 0.11 acre in size with a usable footprint of less than 1/10 of an acre. Very small as they were designed to be a trailer park back in 1994. But the builders changed their mind and built single-story homes of approximately 1,200 square feet. Streets are privately owned by the HOA. They are not wide enough to meet city standards, and since they are not city streets, we, the HOA, have to main do the pay be responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep. Our CCNRs do not allow street parking. They can only park in the driveway or the garage. During current construction, which was heavy in the back doorway for a while, and now it's coming back strong and heavy again. If the work vehicles are parked across from each other, it's extremely difficult for an emergency vehicle to get through against the width of our streets. We really try and encourage them to jack, but contractors are contractors and they they park for they close to their job, which I understand. We currently have 60 of our 76 lots in various stages of construction from fully occupied during the foundation stage itself. The new owners purchased Oak Valley expecting the community to remain a single-story medium-density family zoning community and to become multifamily high-density would decrease the value of our homes, discourage future sales and create parking problems with our street situation. We do currently allow 10% of our homes or the 76 homes, we allow eight renters that are involved in there. You have to get on the list and wait and be part of that. You know, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me on this report, and I'm doing it along with Ralph Henderson with Autumn Ridge. We're working together on this project. We have a lot of similar concerns and, you know, a couple of smaller areas in our area, units in our area have been re-raised back to single-family medium-density. We like to join that group since we are a single-family community itself of 55 plus. I'm a question you consider this very strongly and put it back to the, you know, single-family medium-density as it was prior to 2019. You made the change at that time. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ralph Henderson. Please come forward and state your name and your city for the record.
Ralph Henderson, 105 Suncrest Grove, California. Now, Mayor Council members, good evening. My name's Ralph and I live at, given my address, I chair the architectural review committee with the Autumn Ridge conditions and restricted covenants. CCNRs are short. I hereby ask the council to change the zoning of Autumn Ridge subdivision to high-density to single-family home medium-density. I understand the issues. We need housing. The housing needs to be affordable and it needs to be accessible for a large population to a front house, the front of house people. We need necessitating zones, large areas of our city as high-density to provide a man to build this affordable housing. I also realize there is a state mandate that to increase high-density housing. What I don't understand is how Autumn Ridge, my neighborhood, ended up as high-density. I think I understand the history subdivision was originally a zone that's high-density. The developer was allowed to build single-family homes, which points to at least a tacitly approved change of zoning at that point. Prior to the fire, the decision was made to apply to high-density status to the development in 2019. Although this subdivision was completely built out of the home, that's what doesn't make any sense to me. It's there was there was no land that was added to build homes, just the change of the zoning. What it did do is it changed our homes from conformal to existing non-conformal. Then I'll be the fire staff. The fire focused attention on the unintended consequences of the zoning's change. The council responded by allowing rebuilding of recently existing non-conforming structures, setting limits on rebuilding the plans and non-conformist for non-conforming structures as well as other measures necessary due to the high-density zoning status. This includes the recently adopted chapter 18, 195, non-conforming jurisdictions. The Autumn Ridge community responded to the situation by renewing and modifying their conditions and restricted covenants to allow observing blowing limits, creating more available rent limits and lessening the housing shortage issue. There are now more units for rent available on Ridge than before the fire. The existing non-conforming structure status will affect our property values and possibly the ability to rebuild if disaster strikes again. I don't feel secure in my own home. This is a reasonable request. Just down Suncrest Grove is the Will Street subdivision, a neighborhood very much like Autumn Ridge. And that area is of single-family medium-density, and we only ask to be zoning safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is city reports. 5.1 is city manager.
Pardon me, mayor. There's one additional speaker request that came through email.
Is it? Is it on the it was it a on the non-agenda item?
Correct. It is a non-agenda item.
Okay, and this was this came earlier through the email?
Correct.
Yep. So as we spoke about last week, the current council rules is that they be present and fill out a speaker request form. And so we're gonna adhere to that rule until we have a chance to review our hybrid. Our hybrid meeting types. And we relaxed those rules during the time that we were all on Zoom, but we went back to our council rules when we went hybrid and we'll review those council rules soon, I think. We keep trying. No fault of your own, by the way, Dave. And we'll review it at that time. So at this time, I won't be taking any speaker request forms by email. And just encourage people to utilize either coming in and doing speaker speakers heard forums or currently we are still accepting written communications to the agenda as well.
Thank you, mayor.
Alright, thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and move to city reports. 5.1 is city manager's report.
If I may, I'd like to combine 5.1 and 5.2.
Very good.
So a few things to report. One is that Hector Flores has been diligently working on analyzing the plan for the new website. And I I think I distributed the preliminary schedule for that recently to the council. If not, I'll have it attached to your weekly report this week. But the target deadline for rolling out the new website, although it won't be complete, is March 11. I'm hoping that we'll be able to have a preview of the website at your goal-setting session this Saturday. There's still a lot of work to do to migrate information from the old site to the new. But we're close. We have a target date. We've got a schedule of activities that need to be accomplished internally, reviewed by various departments, testing it. But we're gonna get there. And the target is March 11. And we're working hard on it.
For clarifying purposes, is that March 11th for the launch of the new website? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Next, the goals meeting is this Saturday. Just wanted to remind everyone that a the council's having a special workshop this Saturday starting at 10 a.m. to review the city council's goals and priorities that were adopted last year. Take a look at things that need to be modified, added, or deleted from those goals and priorities. So the council has set aside most of the day to undertake that effort. And we're looking forward to sharing, the staff's looking forward to sharing in that event as well. And we're going to be able to use that information as we move into preparing our proposed budget. And you know, using your tools and priorities as our drivers for the budget preparation. The city is currently recruiting for a public works director. The application first review is February 26. I can report that as of today, we have five applicants. I've not gone into reviewing them in in any detail at this point. But pleased that we have received applications, looking forward to filling that position when she's been vacant for some time. Something you'll start seeing on your agenda soon is something called the Look Ahead. This is a document that Hector and I have been working on to produce that looks looks out for several months for council meetings in the future. So we can start placing items that need attention by the council that have interest from the council that would like to see us work on out several months so we can start planning for those items before they come to the city council. Looking at having that look ahead on on one of the two council meetings every month. So we can review what's coming up and we can get requests from council members so we can fill in and populate the future agendas as well as items coming from staff and commission. I have a meeting with Access next week to discuss the status of the residential units at the gateway. And I'll report back to the council. And actually, there will be renewal agency at your next meeting on that status. Hopefully before. I'll have a report out to you. And also on the urban renewal agency, you tonight approved three grant application support letters that will be submitted this Friday or Saturday. Looking forward to progressing along with those. And I also reported earlier in the urban renewal agency on the status of the peer grant application. So if you have any questions, things I should be bringing forward to the council, please let me know. Can that's all I have.
Any questions? Counselor Perry Miller?
I let the talent public arts committee know about the study session on Saturday, and I just was wondering if you had an idea of what time it would be best for committee members to show up. I told them they were welcome for the entirety of the meeting, but that we probably wouldn't get to committees until midway through.
I would say perhaps after lunch.
Okay, noon, 12:30 ish?
Yeah.
Okay. We can actually target that time to to have that discussion. Great. Anybody else? Yeah, I just want to say I'm excited about the Look Ahead. The reputation of your agenda item preceded you coming into the city. I heard that in one of your referrals that the Look Ahead is is a really great tool for us, and I'm excited about it. I think that's a great thing to bring to us. Thank you. Alright, with that, let's go ahead and move on to item number six, which is the consent calendar. Is there anything on the consent calendar that needs to be pulled out for discussion? No, I do want to mention Counselor Byers, was it you who said that you were expecting some recommendations to be coming in from parks?
And the Becker, we did touch on the recommendations that were made and addressed it.
Okay, so nothing to discuss there? Okay, very good. Alright, so if there's nothing to pull out for discussion, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Counselor Byers?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Did you get a nomer? Okay. Item 7.1 will be the Rogue World Music. But before you step down, Dave, I'm gonna ask you this just because I'm I I I'm so fixed on this idea that ethics and and conflict of interest is an important topic that a lot of people misunderstood. And it occurred to me when I was saying, as we adopted the agenda, I didn't really think about the question that was asked, should I recuse myself? And really, adopting an agenda, there's no potential gain from adopting an agenda item. Is that right?
That's right.
So if that were ever to come up again, I wouldn't I wouldn't make the same call, but I just didn't really think about it just for for but the reason I like to say that is because oftentimes this is a misunderstood topic, and I'm a believer to just follow the rules and not and not break the rules, but also not do things that aren't required either. So I appreciate your input on that. Thank you so much. So we are gonna take this up. Counselor Byers?
And I want to step off the dais for agenda item 7.1. I did email the commission about this and I need to recuse myself for unvoting and declare a.
And that is because you are a paid employee of Rogue World Music. Is that correct? Very good. Thank you. Alright, with that, I think what we'll do is just bring up the speaker request form. Sophia, if you'll come forward, please, and state your name and city for the record. There's a microphone somewhere. If you'll hand that down for me, Dave.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, everyone. Sophia Blanton, 149 Clear Creek Drive in Ashland. I am the Development and Events Manager for Rogue World Music in Oregon, 501(c)(3) Public Arts Organization. We organized the Rogue World Music Festival, previously the Ashland World Music Festival, which began in 2016 by invitation of Ashland Parks and Rec to create a public arts event in Lithia Park over Memorial Day weekend. That event since 2016 has grown. We took the lead in event production and by 2019, the festival became a multi-day, multi-venue public arts event. In 2020, like a lot of organizations, we had to pivot because we were affected by the pandemic and the wildfire. And this is when we realized that we could be leveraging public arts in response to community need. Hence, our leveraging of the virtual and eventually hybrid and then live versions of the festival as fundraisers for fire recovery benefiting local organizations like the Phoenix Talent School District, Unité, Coalition Fortaleza, and Access. We have raised nearly $40,000 for their organizations for fire recovery while keeping. while keeping the festival free, and we will continue to do that in 2024 as we rebrand to the Rogue World Music Festival. So, you know, in 2023, we were astounded and very happy to have record attendance, 5,000-plus people. In 2023, we were also very honored to receive the Oregon Recreation and Parks Association Private Sector Partnership Award, which is very, very gratifying and encouraging to us as we do our work in public arts. All of this also led to the decision to rebrand as the Rogue World Music Festival. And we were very lucky to strengthen our partnerships with the Cities of Talent and Ashland, Talent Business Alliance, DMOs like Travel Ashland and now Travel Medford, and a new partnership with Medford Parks and Rec. So part of our expansion strategy and the way that we're going about things is, you know, we don't want to produce a public arts event in a vacuum. We would like what we do to support the community revitalization objectives of the towns that we serve with the Rogue World Music Festival. We know, for example, impact studies have shown that towns and communities with a strong public arts presence tend to be happier, healthier, more diverse, and more connected. And this all adds up to vibrancy, that essential feeling about a place that it is a good place to live. And we think that in the wake of this double effect of the pandemic and the wildfire, that that is a worthy objective for us to be working in tandem with. We would like to leverage the festival also to encourage more intertown visitation, circular exchange for folks from the different towns to visit each other. And we would like the festival to continue to attract arts tourism from the region and nationally. We know that the arts drive commerce to local businesses. Arts travelers are in in a way, the 2023 Arts and Economic Prosperity Studies said that arts travelers are ideal tourists. They tend to stay longer. They spend more money to seek out authentic cultural experiences. And they spend, on the average, about $48 per person. You imagine, they come here, they park, they eat, they drink. You know? And so so having said all of this, we are thrilled to bring our storytelling event, the festival storytelling event, Heartbeat Stories, to Talent for the 2024 Rogue World Music Festival over Memorial Day weekend. It'll be held here at the Talent Library Commons space, which is a space that Rogue World Music has collaborated with various entities in in producing other cultural events. For example, the Dia de la Independencia Mexicana that we helped support this past year. And we've seen that the Talent Library Commons is a really wonderful venue to draw the community together for a public arts experience. You know, it costs us around $80,000 to produce the festival. And we do it all with a staff of two ladies. And we do it through grant funding and and sponsorship. So we work very, very hard at that. And the type of support that we're asking from the council is, first of all, we would love a letter of support from the council for us to be able to submit in our grant writing. Letters of support help us demonstrate to our grantors like the Oregon Cultural Trust, the Ford Family Foundation, Carpenter Foundation, the Oregon Arts Commission, helps us demonstrate to them that we work in conscious collaboration with the communities where we place our festival events and that there is community buy-in and that the event is serving a greater purpose. So I have some sample letters of support here that I can pass to you. So if the council would like to vote on that this evening, to ask the city manager to have it drafted on city letterhead and signed, that would be great. But if not, we can supply one for a future agenda as well. We would also really appreciate it if we could be invited back to give a 10-minute presentation with some deeper data about the impact of public arts and a number of ways that the City of Talent can make progress on its goals and agenda around community revitalization through its collaboration with this event. So ideally, we'd love to present this to you before your budgeting process starts. And then we we would love to discuss the potential sponsorship for next year's event because supporting what we do with the Rogue World Music Festival, it can help this city achieve community engagement and economic revitalization goals as outlined in the goal-setting process for Talent fiscal year 2023, 2024. So I thank you all for having me in today to to talk about this. And I hope that you like what you've heard, and I am happy to pass you the sample.
Send letter of support. Let me, can I ask you a question? Do you have a deadline? Go ahead and give it to Hector. Do you have a deadline for the first needed letter of support?
It would be great if we could get this letter of support within the next couple of weeks because springtime is a pretty active time for us with grant writing. So if that's a possibility for you, that that would be very supportive for us.
All right, so if we just indulge this item for a moment, let's go ahead and take a look at the sample letter and see if the council wants to approve.
Sorry, I missed it. What was the deadline?
They have, they want to get them in, they're in, within the couple of weeks, they're getting in grant writing season. Dave, we'll look to you to see if there's any challenges that you want to point out. Or Gary?
And just a note in the with the brackets there. That is the space to to put the name of the of the grantor. So it's actually four letters of support that that we would like. We would like one for the Oregon Cultural Trust, one for the Ford Family Foundation, one for Carpenter, and one for Oregon Arts Commission. And I can also send that in.
Are there any questions, Council Perry Miller?
It just occurred to me that Council Penomra can't see this.
Oh. So. Yeah.
I'm, you know, I think I'm I'm fine if if staff doesn't have a problem with it. I think it sounds like a really good cause.
Okay, thank you, Council Penomra. Are there any objections from staff? Do you want to wait on it or?
I wouldn't say any objections. I I think we might want to make some minor changes, not in major concepts, but just in some of the wording. So what I might suggest is that if the council wishes to proceed with a vote tonight, approve signing a a support letter along these lines with a few changes to be made.
I think we could make it pending, pending approval of the staff. Pending a final approval of the staff. And yeah, yeah, that that would probably cover it.
If we could get the addresses to.
It would work if the staff is able. The other question I want to ask is, does staff have capacity in the next few days to address this? Okay.
Probably next week.
By next week?
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. So is any, does anybody need more time to look at this?
And what's in the sample letter? I mean, those are just our, you know, our broad concepts and, you know, it's 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 open to you adapting it in to your own language.
In this case, we would, we would actually open it up to the staff to adapt it to the language, and then you guys can agree upon. All right, so we'll entertain a motion. Council Perry Miller?
I move to approve this letter of support for Rogue World Music pending any feedback or updates from staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this letter of support for Rogue World Music pending any updates or feedback from staff. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dave, you have a copy of this? Okay, very good. Thank you so much, and we're so grateful to Rogue World Music, not just for the past collaborations, which have been phenomenal. Your organization is phenomenal to work with. But how lucky are we that you're bringing, you're expanding the festival and bringing it into talent?
Thank you so much. We really expect that that particular festival event will bring at least 400 people into town. So we're super excited about it as well. We we love that space. So thank you too.
Outstanding.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So we'll wait for Council Byers to return to the dais. All right, the next item on the agenda is 7.2. It's approval of Resolution 2024-085-R, establishing a fee schedule for water rates. Staff report?
Mayor, members of the council, 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3 are all resolutions that establish a part of the water user fee schedule. 7 85, 85R establishes the user fee rate schedule. 87 or 86R establishes the fee schedule for system replacement, which is a new fee schedule. And 7.3 establishes the water system. Separates out a portion of the fees that go into 86R. So our finance director is going to be presenting on these items. The consultant that the city retained to assist with the water rate study, I believe, is going to be participating by Zoom. And I'll turn it over to finance director at this time.
Just for the record, the the agenda item numbers are now 72, 73, and 74.
Okay, thank you very much. We should have Josiah close, HGR Engineering, to answer the questions. Here the staff report, pretty, pretty much very similar to the last two staff reports that you received in regard to these resolutions and the questions.
Are there any questions? Are there any highlights, Tessa, that you want to touch on?
Not quite sure what you would want me to touch on.
This would be, yeah, twice. Most, yeah, three times. Okay. Just i- if you had highlights that you wanted to touch on.
It's very important when adopting one single resolution. First one, that we have, that you include in the the, when you do that, be sure to send Resolution 2023-060-R.
I think that's in the motion, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, very good.
Mayor, I have my hand up. I don't know if you can see.
Yeah, I I can't. Council Penomra?
Thank you. Yeah, so I appreciate the, all the work that went into this. I know we met three times. I, what I really liked is in the packet this time where we talked about the impact on just like a regular ratepayer that most of our residents are. And that example that was helpful. I did a little, I was kind of reanalyzing the numbers and I was and I noticed that while the residential kind of has a very, kind of a smooth progression, there's an initial kind of increase and that tapers off a little bit, but it tends to increase. Some of the larger meter sizes tend to like go up and then and then they go down. And it's, it's, it looks a little harder to explain. And I was going to invite, I think Josiah and and Tessa were very helpful in the emails to me and kind of explaining why that's so. But I think it's I I'd like to hear that explanation here and on the record. I think that'll help us moving forward for, over the course of five years, when the rates for these larger customers kind of go up and and then they and then they go down. It's, it's kind of a odd situation. But I'd like to just turn the floor over to Josiah and Tessa to respond.
Yeah, Hector, could I share my screen real quick? Thank you. Okay. Let me know if you guys can see it. Good. So what we're looking at is a table that shows this current column is the current equivalency factors for each meter size. So what we do is we divide the cost for each meter size by the 3/4 inch. And we can come up with an equivalency factor for each meter size. And what we compare that to is the American Waterworks Association equivalencies, which are based on the safe operating capacity of the meters. So basically, the potential water that can go through those, the diameter of pipe by the different meter sizes. And so in contemporary ratemaking, typically what we'll do is we'll try to match these ratios because that's a defendable position to take. We're incorporating, we take the entire cost and we divide it by the number of equivalent units. And then we multiply it by each factor. And that gives us a relationship that we can then defend based on the potential usage of that water meter. So a lot of our engineering, you know, the system specifications, we can tie that back to a capacity requirement. And the fixed charge is covering that potential capacity for customers. Whereas in the variable charge, we're charging customers for how and how much water they actually use and when they use it. So because this, the delta or the difference between these ratios was significant, especially for these larger meters, what we worked with staff to come up with a recommendation to transition over the five years. So what this table does is it essentially takes the difference and then divides it by the five years so that by the last year, we get our AWWA meter ratios. But what happens is in the short term, you'll see these ratios will impact the rates. So I'll flip down here quick for the the larger meters, keeping the same charge for the 3/4 inch. Because we're lowering that ratio factor between them, then that makes their rate cheaper. And so then as we increase that further, you can see um, you can see increases in those meter chargers. Uh, the other option would be to jump straight to those meter equivalencies, the first, uh, year of our proposed rates. But again, that's what, um, we're trying to avoid any rate shock to the customers, um, and we didn't, we couldn't come back to, uh, there wasn't any documentation for the current rates. Um, there was probably a justification at the time that they put those in, um, but we just don't have the information on it. And so the most defensible position we found was to transition to this A W W A, um, factors, but that does mean that there are some impacts then to the lower rates greater proportionally than the larger meters, because currently they're paying proportionally a higher ratio to, um, the three-quarter inch meter.
So can I follow up?
Yep.
Um, yeah, so I think, so I think the explanation is, you know, just, um, the, the kind of transitioning into, um, uh, conformance with the A W W A, um, is why you have that kind of wobbly effect, um, on, on the larger meters. Um, and I think the, the follow-up question I had, I think I've been making some assumptions that I actually, now I realize I'm not sure I actually heard you say, um, can, can give me an idea of what percentage of our, uh, residential customers are at the three-quarter? Is that, is that like pretty much everyone?
It's pretty, yeah, I would assume it's pretty much everyone, yeah.
And so for the larger ones that are two, three, and four, and six, are those gonna be, um, our industries or, uh, I'm just wondering how many?
Yeah, large users. You may have some irrigation accounts, um, probably some mobile home parks and things that have larger diameter meters.
Okay, and, but, but with like the mobile home parks and stuff, that would be spread among, um, all the, all the users there, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. So I mean, so we're really, you know, most of our constituents are gonna be on that first level anyway.
Yes.
Okay, great. That's really helpful. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Any other questions? I just want to make a clarifying point. If I understand this correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're passing zero eight seven tonight, because when we rescind twenty-three dash zero six zero, it will rescind the water system connection fees.
Which is included on that reservation.
Right, and so this is so that we can create a, reestablish those fees at the same rate temporarily until we have a chance to review those. Very good. Very good. Are there any other questions? All right, uh, so we'll take these one at a time. I'll entertain a motion on seven point two, which is approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight five dash R establishing a fee schedule for water rates. Counsel Perry Miller?
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero eight five dash R establishing a fee schedule for water rates and rescinding resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero six zero dash R.
We have a motion and a second to approve a resolution twenty twenty-four. Can you guys tell me what page it's on?
It's on thirty-four.
What, what's one?
It's on thirty-four, the very bottom. Thanks.
Uh, to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero eight five dash R establishing a fee schedule for water rates and rescinding resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero six zero dash R. Counselor Byers?
Noted, thank you.
All right, uh, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any, any discussion here? Counsel Perry Miller?
Just very briefly, I want to sta-, uh, thank staff for their very hard and diligent work in this very, very, um, important process. So, thank you, Tessa.
Yeah, I just want to echo, this is the second time I've sat through a water rate study in my years, and this is by far the more thorough and informative study, and it just makes such a difference, the process you ran, giving us several uh, opportunities to study this with you and understand it thoroughly, and I just feel like it's making the decision-making process so much easier. Thank you, Tessa, for your professionalism and your great work, and also to the consultant. You've been a real pleasure to have around. Uh, anybody else? All right, uh.
A question?
Counsel By, uh, Panamrav, did you have your hand up?
Yes, um, I, just one, one follow-up question in the, in the, um, in the case that I, that I hope does happen, that some of this grant money comes through, um, would we then revisit, uh, some of these rates and, and uh, if so, when on that timeline does that look like that might be?
That has not been discussed. I think we can make that, we, uh.
I can't, sorry, I couldn't hear.
Go ahead and take the, and call the question, and then we can talk about that after.
Sure.
Yeah, all right. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Panamrav?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers? Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on item number seven point three. Counsel Byers?
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero eight five establishing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty, uh, zero eight six, excuse me. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero eight six dash R establishing a fee schedule for water system replacement. Um, is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Counselor Panamrav?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo?
Yeah.
Counselor Byers? Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Item never, uh, item number seven point four is the approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight seven dash R establishing water system connection fees. Sir, I'm, I'm sorry, is there a motion for that? Uh, Counsel Pesezo?
Aye.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Panamrav?
Yeah. Yes.
Counselor Redder?
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo?
Yeah.
Counselor Byers? Counselor Paramiller? Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Thank you again, Tessa.
Thank you. It's, uh, one, we have this table team on it on this.
Yep, appreciate hearing that. Next item on the agenda is eight point one, approval of Arbor Day planning. Staff report?
Mayor, members of the council, the urban forestry, uh, commit, committee is recommending that the city council conduct, or that the city conduct an expanded event for Arbor Day on April fourteenth. The initial recommendation was made at their meeting in January twenty-first, uh, and details have been uh, discussed and are continuing to be discussed and worked out for the event. Uh, the staff has facilitated some discussion, uh, with, uh, the, um, management at the Talent Mobile Estates, uh, and we'll have some additional follow-up work to do with them as they've expressed some concerns about the event, um, and hopefully we can resolve those. Uh, we also need to obtain, uh, final approval from, uh, O Web for the transfer of sixty trees uh, from the current O Web sites to this location, uh, for the event. Uh, the event's proposed to be held on a Sunday, uh, and it's proposed that the street be closed for the event to allow for public safety and planting. Um, that would require, uh, us to assign public work staff to manage the traffic, uh, on that street as there are driveways along the street that are the only access to those properties, um, by vehicles. So, uh, we're not going into the, into the full detail of the report, but you can see it here. Uh, I think the issues that, uh, have been raised by, um, Talent Mobile Estates Management, uh, we need further meeting, a follow-up with them. Um, it seems like the logistics could be worked out. Um, so we're, we're recommending that you, uh, tend to tentatively approve the plan, uh, and, uh, the staff will work with the committee to finalize the plans for the event. Uh, in the alternative, if you decide to not go forward with a larger event, uh, we'd need to have some direction to the staff to plan a smaller event. I, I believe there are members of the committee here this evening who may wish to speak on the topic. I don't know if they submitted a request.
Does anybody, uh, from the commission want to come forward and can I ask a quick technical question while, um, while speakers are coming forward? Uh, what is a, what does tentatively approved technically mean?
That, that would mean that we'd identify it as a project that the city is, uh, supporting, um, but that we have a lot of loose ends to, uh, complete before we could actually implement the event.
And so that means that there is, um, there are issues that could arise or that may not get worked out that would cancel the event? Is that a possibility?
Would modify the event in some way.
Okay. I understand. Uh, okay, name and city for the record.
I'm Jane Hardgrove, and I live at one-one-three North Second Street in Talent, and this is Mike.
Mike Oxendine, I also live in Talent. I'm not on the committee, I'm just an advisor to the committee.
Very good. So, we did a drawing.
Um, it's Arno Street that we're looking at there, and that's the place, if you remember, the ash trees that were that beautiful yellow forest of ash trees that burnt. So this is really right in the middle of the fire, right where we lost that thirty percent of our tree canopy in the fire. So, we're hoping to line, I call it, I call it east and west side of Arnos. It might not be correct, but you'll get it. So there is, um, the road and a curb, there's a grass strip right there that is city property, and we're wanting to plant there on that side, which is the west side. There is irrigation there already, is that right, Mike? That's what, and it's, um, under the power lines. So we designed trees that would, could go underneath the power line that are part of the Pacific Power Tree List to go under, and they're twenty-five at the most, thirty feet tall. There's a lot of real pretty different types of maples that would be in that list. The other side, um, they did a really beautiful plan for that park. I don't know if you've seen it, there's so many trees that are gonna go back in there. But what they did on the street is they planted the same small kind of maples on that side of the street. There's no power lines there. There is a block brick wall that's right there, so, um, they, I know one of their concerns was they were concerned about that wall, and that Oregon, who will be doing the prep for this event, would be able to put root barrier down there, and would also be able to put in the irrigation on these trees when they get planted, so we don't have to worry about that. So there should be a point of entry where there can be water for that, because they, there's people that have water in there right now. What we're hoping to do is to have a really community event for Arbor Day, where we really get people excited about replacing our tree canopy. And we have a lot of trees from that O Web grant left to do that. We were gonna put them down in, what's the name of that? Other? Where they didn't want them? Mountain View, you know, down in there. We were gonna put a lot of trees down in there, and it's privately owned, and they don't want trees down in there right now. So this is part of our way of using some of those trees and street trees. What we're really looking for, forgot to finish that sentence, is that we want larger trees over there on that side where there's no power. Not huge, but bigger so that we can begin to make that canopy over the street for climate change. So, and the reason we want that street closed, if we can do it, is so that we can really get the kids involved. We want to go to the Talent Elementary and get some art projects going, and there's nothing cooler than having kids plant trees in your town and be invested. So that's why we're thinking about the larger event. If it needs to be smaller, we can go. Yeah, I'm gonna hand it over to Mike, because he knows so much about.
I just wanted to, um, briefly run through the last couple of years Arbor Day celebrations that the City of Talent has hosted. Um, in twenty twenty-two, uh, we planted, uh, the Talent Urban Forestry Committee hosted an Arbor Day event at Talent Middle School and Talent Elementary School, uh, where we planted ninety-four trees, um, and that project took place across, um, Wagner Road, the main road that goes between the middle school and the elementary school. Um, and so we did, the morning session was on one side of the street, and then the afternoon session was on the other side of the street. Um, and because of the work that we did in twenty twenty-two, the City of Talent was recognized as Tree City of the Year for Oregon in twenty twenty-three. And in twenty twenty-three, uh, we planted Cameron Springs Park, and we did, uh, ninety-five trees, so one more tree than we did the previous year in twenty twenty-two. Um, this year is already scaled back at sixty trees along Arnos, which seems like a significant tree planting event for most cities. Um, but Talent has been leading the way forward, obviously, after the Almita Fire, with restoration efforts to try and recover some of that lost canopy, um, and so I just wanted to recognize that Talent is making huge strides to replacing that lost canopy. Um, Arnos Street was picked because, um, it was adjacent to the Talent Mobile Estates, um, which obviously, like Jane had mentioned, lost a tremendous amount of canopy, probably one of the best higher connected canopies in, um, Jackson County, especially for a mobile and manufactured home park, um, and it's got a bus stop, stop right along the sidewalk right there, that's heavily used, and it has no shade right there. Um, and so trying to really bring the community together, um, to show that we support the redevelopment of the Talent Mobile Estates and the resident-owned park that's gonna be there, that's such an amazing and awesome project. Um, and really trying to like, provide that, maybe a boost of media and positive energy to that project that it could get, um, from this tree planting event, and also all of the people that are currently living there would be outreach to and invited, and all of the people that are, that are living, um, there, I think there's five homes still, um, and two that have been rebuilt on Arnos Street, they would all get invited as well, obviously, um, to this event.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. This, uh, what we've been for, we do, we know that we need to work with the private managers for this part. And they may really, we haven't really, like, nailed them, definitely, in terms of who we want there, but it was hoping that we could expand them in terms of that maybe we could, if this was a small time, and this would be, uh, the.
Mayor, a couple of things.
Gary?
If, if the council votes to go forward with this concept plan, we see that as the council's authorization for the staff to expend more hours resolving some of the logistical issues and coordination issues with the property owners and estate agencies. Um, that, that, that's really what we're looking for here, is if you, if you approve it in concept, then we'll come back to you for final approval. I also wanted to mention, I think the staff has been working with, uh, Mountain View Estates to, uh, uh, you know, plan for tree planting here, which is my correct. Yeah.
Recently, the, uh, property owner of Mountain View reached out, um, initially, their initial engagement with them is that they were not very interested in in the trees at all, perhaps only about fifteen trees, which would be less than, the two hundred a- allocated for that site at Mountain View. And we, we moved forward, and there was a plan put together by the Urban Forestry Committee to move sixty trees of the two hundred, uh, to Arnos. Uh, since then, uh, Mountain View, the owner of Mountain View has come back and wants to reengage and see how many of the two hundred trees can still be put on their property. So I'm following up with them, um, and that's where we are with, uh, Mountain View. So there's engagement, re-engagement, and really, uh, And that's where we are with uh, Mountain View. So there's engagement, reengagement, and really, uh, at their whim.
Are they aware that it's likely a reduced amount at this point?
Uh, well, they were allocated the two hundred amount, uh, two hundred trees. So, uh, according to the OWEB grant, they would be the ones, they are the recipients of the two hundred trees. For uh, Mountain View.
I see.
Um, whether we change that amount, we have reached out to OWEB. And talked to Rachel uh, Thompson, and there is some uh, additional research. Uh, that she's requested, that if we do decide to reduce the allocated amount to Mountain View, they would need some additional documentation. So it is flexible, but we're, we're in talks about what that would look like.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's my experience with. Grants is that if they change, it needs to be amended, but. Can I ask you a question about that? Um, because I wanna make sure that I'm clearly understand, um, so. We wrote into the grant that two hundred trees would go into Mountain View.
Correct.
And it was approved based on that.
Correct.
And when we offered the two hundred trees to them, they declined?
Not the entire amount, probably only fifteen, maybe twenty trees, uh. Not where the units are, but in their uh, more recreational areas. They have a dog park, there are some greenery. That's where their tree, that's where they would like the trees to go. Uh, their overall landscaping plan doesn't um, really. Excuse me, the um, property owners' overall landscaping plans to recover the, the uh, property, they would like low maintenance. So there's a lot of gravel, artificial grass, and small shrubs. Uh, so trees is something that they uh, haven't factored into what their park would look like going forward. And that's where the hesitation comes from, Mountain View.
They've since changed their mind.
Correct.
And did they know we wrote two hundred trees into their grant?
Yes, I've met with Doy, uh, the owner of the property several times, and uh. Kai, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember his son's name, but uh, Zai. And uh, so there's been this. No, we're not interested, then we meet again, it's semi-interested, and then we meet again, and then we're, we're not interested. And now the, the conversation is, yes, we're interested, let's see what that would look like.
Did we know ahead of time, I guess, I, I, let me rephrase it. Did we know when we were writing the grant? Did, did anybody talk to them and ask them if they wanted the two hundred trees?
From my conversation with uh, the property owners is they were aware of. Some of the application, uh, you know, Mike Oxendine who's here today, he could probably speak more knowledgeably about that, but. My understanding is that uh, they are, they were aware in some capacity.
I'm just getting, I am getting to a point, so I do wanna know, did they know that we were writing the two hundred trees?
Yes.
Yeah, and they wanted them at the time, but when they arrived, they declined them?
They were not clear as they wanted all two hundred trees to begin with.
Okay. Uh, Council Penamoriff, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Um, in the, in the conversations with Mountain View, was there any ability or requests? To um, kind of have a, um, you know, like a presentation to the residents?
I'm sorry, Councilor, I cut you off.
No, no, that, that was at the residents, and then there's a question mark where my voice goes up?
Uh, yes, the outreach with uh, Mountain View didn't, did include uh, to put together a presentation along with Plant Oregon. And the Urban Forestry Committee to come down and meet the residents, uh, that was not accepted by the property owner. Uh, the, the units are individually owned, but everyone rents the space, and so there's a. Without the owner participating, we cannot sign a landowner agreement, therefore they cannot participate. So that, that's where some of the resistance lies, is we think we cannot accept individual landowners.
So the residents may not know anything about this.
Some know, yeah, we, they've received some information uh, through word of mouth.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I mean, I don't think there's any part of our decision tonight that really uh, relates to the number of trees that's going where and who's getting what. Uh, it's just a matter of curiosity, but um, if this pro, if I, if I understand correctly, if this project goes through. And it's approved, sixty of those trees will go to Arnos, is that correct? After an amendment to the grant?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right. I just have one more question I wanna ask. Um, so. Do you attend the forestry committee meeting, commission meetings?
Not regularly, no.
And, um, but you are the manager of the OWEB grant, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, can we? And I, I feel like there's a little breakdown of court, of collaboration and coordination sometime between uh, the commission and. And I just wanna bring this up really quick, just in case there's a solution that we can come up with. Um, so much of this stuff should be coming to the council as recommendations, way ahead of time, so that we can, you know, review this. Review this, allow staff plenty of time to vet, to vet the, the whatever is coming before us. And um, and then have it, you know, have the recommendation from the commission and have the recommendation from the. Staff so that we can make a decision. So I'm, I'm asking Gary to um, develop a workflow chart. Um, that will um, start to, start to really illustrate for everybody how these recommendations flow. And um, and how decisions are made at the council level, how to utilize our resources, because really we are. Um, the deciding body on how to utilize resources. So I wanna kinda try to get, I. I, since we have you here, I wanna try to figure out with you guys how to get in front of some of these projects far enough ahead of time so that we can. Clear the, clear the pathway and, and give staff plenty of time to, uh, to vet. So if there's anything in the pipeline beyond this, um, I think that would be a good place to start and to really um, start. I, are you attending the meetings, Gary? Yeah, okay, so that, that sounds to me like that's, that's all getting resolved then.
So, my question then, what kind of, do you want like? Two, so this is an April thing, and I'm, it does feel tight to me, too. Because I realize there's just a lot of bodies we've gotta get connected to. Um, is it like a three-month or a four-month thing? I mean, then we'd be looking into fall planting. Maybe we wanna give you stuff about a fall planting the very first of summer?
Yeah, I think that's a good question for Gary when you're attending the meetings, because part of the equation. You know, the recommendation, you guys have made a decision, the recommendation comes to the council, and we, we accept or not accept your recommendation. And as part of that, um, can, the staff typically would make a, would, would also make a recommendation. You know, we need another month to look at this, we need another two weeks to look at this or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think that's a good question for this flow chart. Um, and when you guys are at the meetings, I just wanna make sure that the communication is happening, like you guys are all working towards that end. And um, so that, uh, so that all of these decisions are somewhat made before we're. Um, before we'll, before we're actually making a decision on recommendation.
Makes sense to me. It feels like there's a lot of little pieces right now that, I'm hoping we can get it lined up.
Yeah, great, same. Thank you for uh, giving me a minute with that. I don't always run into everybody and um, and this is, the, the whole. The whole team is here right now, so. Um, all right, uh, so. I guess we'll entertain, so the other question I have for you, Gary, is you have two potential motions here, one is a. Uh, it's either or. Are you, do you have a recommendation for what would work better for?
I think we should continue to try to work through the uh, the detail. Uh, the, the staff, the staff. Well, I am used to working with commissions, making recommendations to councils, but having some staff work. Done before it comes to the council, so we can tell you, is this at all feasible? Uh, and what some of the issues are on establishing essentially a new event. Um, and what uh, staff resources will be needed in order to conduct the event. Um, so that's, that's, that's what this is, is that here's, we've vetted it this far. Uh, and we've identified issues that need to be resolved going forward. I think those can be resolved. Um, but we don't have it wrapped up in a nice package yet.
So at this point, you are recommending the tentative motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I just, I just wanna say for the record, I think this is uh, a, this is not a new event, it's a larger event. It's, it's just a bigger event of one that we do every year. Um, all right, I just wanted to, I just wanted to hear, hear what of these two, what uh, one. Was making most sense from the staff's perspective. Are there any other questions? Thank you both for coming, really appreciate it. Um, I'll, I'll entertain a motion, Council Buyers. We have a motion and a second to tentatively approve subject to resolving plant selection, irrigation, OWEB, and fencing logistic matters. The April fourteenth, twenty twenty-four Arbor Day event, as proposed by the urban, uh, as proposed by the Urban Forestry Committee. And direct staff to provide necessary logistical support and to report back to the council concerning. Any unresolved logistical matters. Uh, is there any further discussion? I just have one clarifying question, when you say to provide necessary logistical support, is that the staff resource support that you were talking about a few minutes ago?
Yeah, that's uh, that means uh, having us follow up with OWEB. To uh, make the case for transferring the trees. That means uh, having public works employees out there manning barricades.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
That's what I thought, all right. Um, and what's that, uh, Council Penamoriff, do you have a question?
I just had some deliberation.
Great.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, I'm, I'm very supportive of this event. I appreciate the comments about um, it being important. Uh, for climate change to put, get our canopy back. I just want to add that it is also an issue of public health. Uh, mental health, physical health, especially for our seniors. And um, and it's also an equity issue, so I'm, I'm really pleased to see this move forward. I hope that um, our fifty-five-plus um, communities also uh, come to see the uh, the benefit. Of having a, a better tree canopy and um, just think it's a great idea. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. I have one more question of, um. Is it possible for us to get an update from the Forestry Commission, how far we are? With restore, with replacing what we lost at some point in time is, I mean, uh. Yeah, where, how far have we come? How far do we have to go? Um, we don't need to do it tonight, I just think a progress report would really put things into perspective. Yeah, and, and really basic, you know, I just, I just, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because you know, it's really hard. I wanted to say, we also think this event could last about four hours, so the staff that moves me, we feature for that part of it. Would be that we, we can, we, we can get those three planned, three planned in a three-hour envelope, no question. We, we've done it a lot of times, that's how long it takes. Because kind of, it's those trees right there, it holds enough, it's really fun to plant these trees, nobody gets hurt, it's all gonna be good stuff.
Great.
Just so that we had that properly, I know it's, it's not, now we're, it's staff, I'm overtime, I mean, so. I know, I want you to know, we're really positive with that.
Very good, and Jane, thank you for your service. We really appreciate your work. All right, um, next item on the agenda is discussion uh, of events at City Hall. Staff?
Mayor and council members, there was a discussion uh, by the Public Arts Committee, I believe, uh. About having an event on March ninth at uh, City Hall in the lobby, uh, a um. Kind of an open gallery event, uh, and the part of the discussion was whether uh, it's permissible to. Uh, uh, have alcoholic beverages, specifically wine, served on the City Hall property. Uh, the city has a use permit for the community center. But it doesn't extend to the City Hall property. So like, to the question arose, um, you know, this is a, this would be a city-sponsored event. Sponsored by the city's Public Arts Committee. So it really had a two-question issue. One is whether the city council. Uh, sees this as an appropriate use for the lobby. Uh, that the arts uh, open house and be whether um. Alcohol beverages, not, maybe not for this event, they've, I believe the committee is reconsidering it for this kind of event. Uh, whether serving alcoholic beverages uh, by um. Members of the committee, uh, is an appropriate activity uh, at the uh. At the City Hall property. So we, I, I should bring this to you so I can provide advice to the committee. Uh, in connection with organizing the event.
Any questions? I think they were proposing wine tasting, right?
Right. Staff would recommend that no city volunteer or employee actually serve alcoholic beverages on city property.
Yeah, I didn't think I heard that in the meeting, uh, because I was at that meeting. I, I, I thought there was a, a proposal for wine cake, I, I actually underneath. Don't even know if they actually said that it would be from a winery or not. Um, but, yeah, and I don't think they've, uh, the uh, event really hinged on it. Uh, Talent, I, Colette? Excuse me.
That's all right.
Counselor Perry Miller.
Thank you. Um, just a really quick update, uh, like Gary said. This decision isn't gonna have any bearing on uh, this event going forward. T-PAC was mostly just, you know. Wanting to know if that was an option for future events. Um, they also have decided to push the event one day back to March tenth, which is a Sunday, just as a note. Um, and they're totally fine with not um, having any alcohol at the event. So this decision shouldn't be something that we're thinking about that event for, just so that everyone knows.
I think we've done art, art gatherings before. Um, it's been quite a while, um, but it was something that Ron Hodgson, um, they did like a. Um, when they um, switched artists, they would have um, some kind of. I don't, wouldn't call it an art show, but you know, they would have. An arranged, yeah, an arranged thing where people came to, to see who the artist was. Um, so it's a little bit, it sounds to me like this is a little bit different, but. So do you, what decision do you need from us tonight?
Is the City Hall an appropriate venue for this kind of an event? If so, um, we'll work with the committee and. Get it together and, and make it happen. Uh, if the, if it's been done there before, that's good information to know. Um, uh, and secondly, does the uh, council wanna open that up to. Uh, future events where wine is served. Um, you know, alcoholic beverages are allowed in the community center. But, but the use of the City Hall lobby is not addressed in a policy anywhere.
And this is obviously not while City Hall is open, right? This is, this is on a day when City Hall is not in use for, yeah. Um, all right, are there any further questions or discussion?
Um, my hand is raised.
Yeah, sorry, you know, I can't, uh.
I can send you a message in the chat.
You can, you can just ask.
Okay. So, yeah, so now I hear there's two questions, but, but as far as the alcohol question, I feel like if, if right now, there's, there's no. You can't do it because there's no policy and nobody's asking for it. I'm kinda reluctant to, to direct staff to spend any time on this. You know, unless staff really, really wants to. Um, and then as far as the other question is whether or not to have events, um. in, in, in City Hall on the weekend and stuff, whether that's, and, and I, I don't know that there was any concern or problem about that. So I, I didn't see that in the motions and I was, I was just wondering. Aside from the alcohol, is there, is there any kind of concern about having events there in City Hall?
Are you asking a question?
Yeah, that's my question, because I think Gary, you were delineating two types of direction. So the alcohol was fairly clear and, and I don't really have an opinion on that. But as far as you were asking whether or not City Hall should be used for these kinds of events. And I was wondering what, what would be the concern there? I mean, why not?
I don't, staff has no objection to it being used for that purpose. It's just that right now, there's no criteria for it, so.
Aside from the alcohol, there's no criteria?
Like the alcohol, the staff is seeking direction as to whether you want to apply the same standards that you apply to the community center for the service of alcohol, or whether you don't want it served there at all.
That makes sense.
Okay, okay, I get it. You want some sort of policy there?
So it would just be a matter of applying the same policy to City Hall, yeah. That's right.
Sorry, Mayor, I can't, I can't hear Dave at all or Anna, so could you repeat?
You might want to, if we got the same policy, I, I don't know the policy for the other facility has time restriction on when you have alcohol there or not. But City Hall would probably do it.
Because we were talking about an event on a Sunday, but it's in the future. It was on a Sunday, and that would be put into the policy.
So establish an hours restriction, a day and hours restriction.
So do you need a, you only need a motion if we're going to authorize serving beer and wine, is that correct? Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion? All right, I think it fails for lack of motion. And if, if it does come up again, if there is desire to talk about it, I think it may be just bringing a drafted policy with, I'm hearing everybody say that it would be constrained to hours when City Hall is not open, so.
Focus.
Great, thank you, Gary, for bringing this. Temporary event signs and banners on city property, staff?
Mayor and members of the council, we recently had a situation where a local nonprofit posted a banner advertising their fundraising event, I believe it was, on the bollards on the outside of the, of the roundabout. And it was brought to my attention by the staff that there's no provision for that in the city's code. There's actually a violation of the sign ordinance. So we contacted the parties and asked them to remove the banner. But I had another request from another nonprofit for a banner at the same location. So I wanted to bring it to the council's attention to see if there is interest in establishing some policies with respect to placing banners there. That generated a larger discussion and the staff about finding a good location for banners, perhaps, and elevated holes that a banner could be placed on. But the question, the question arose as to whether we just wanted to stick with the no provision for banners now, or whether we want to allow some of the banners to continue by suspending enforcement until a policy is established, since we're going into the spring and we're going into the event season, if you will. I don't know what the history of banners has been at that location, but I'm reluctant to allow banners in an area that is not permitted in our municipal code without bidding it with the council. So I made a suggestion here that perhaps you send the matter of banners to the planning commission for consideration as a part of a sign ordinance revision. And if you want to allow banners to continue now, to direct us to suspend enforcement temporarily until the issue is resolved.
I have a couple of questions. So you sent me an email saying you may hear, hear from this organization who we're talking about, and I did, late this afternoon. I didn't actually connect the dots because in your email, it was a guy, a man, and who visited me were two members, two female members. And so I just didn't connect the dots until they came and talked to me about what their concerns were. And the reason I say that is because it was late in the afternoon. Had I had an earlier discussion and realized what it was, I would have come back to discuss it with you a little bit. So I hate, I, I apologize to everybody. I'm going to discuss this a little bit now. So they had a, they had a permit, a copy of a permit that they had gotten prior to the fire. And apparently there are clips on the bollards, although I haven't seen them. And the way they use it is, they use it to, and this is getting to a larger point. They use it once a month, or once every six weeks, six times a year, they said, for one week, they put up their sign saying that the green bags are going to come out. This is for the food project. So they hang it up for a week, saying that next week, the green bags are going to come out. And, and they have been there for a very long time, as long as I can, as long as I can remember from the, from the green bag project. And, and then I, in discussion with them, they showed me, they showed me the code. And what I saw was what looked like is that the code is silent on this issue, right? And so it was less of, does it, it felt to me like it was less of a violation of a code because we don't have a policy on it, but that, that it's just our code is silent on it, and the practice has been to allow them to put there. So I agree that wholeheartedly and said to them that there is a need for a code. But in the meantime, if we, if, if it's true that there's, we're silent on it, is there any reason why we couldn't allow them to continue to come in and get a permit from the city, or get some sort of permission from the city so they can continue the practice that's been going on for years, while we develop criteria for that?
Well, there's no authority for me to issue a permit. So that's why I brought it here to get guidance from the council as to whether you want me to suspend enforcement until the issue is resolved.
But I don't know what we're enforcing is the, is the challenge, because there's no, there is no code. And I guess what I'm just asking for is, can, so it's been a practice for years. Can we just allow that practice to continue until we do develop a code?
The council can do that.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm asking. And they, you know, they had mentioned that they came in in twenty twenty and gotten oral permission again after the fire. So it sounds to me like it's just been something that's been allowed for a long time. And at one point in time, they actually paid it for a permit. I saw the permit, so. So that, that's what I would hope for, is that instead of, instead of us disallowing it until we get a, until we get a policy written, that we go ahead and allow it as, has always been the case, apparently. Unless.
So would I also, would we also then allow other groups who've never had a banner there before to install banners?
I, I, has there been a rush of, I'm, are we getting a lot of requests for?
But I do have one.
One additional request?
Yeah.
Yeah, one additional request, like, that would be my inclination, but I don't want to speak for the, for the council. I'm just worried that this is such an important project for our community, and that announcement is what a lot of people rely on. And I, I would hate for them to have a difficult time getting those green bags collected while, while they wait for, to get in the queue of what is a whole bunch of code changes. So maybe, Council Buyers? My understanding, the original concern was that they were tying them to utility. And I do think that's against, like a power pole or something. That's what I had understood originally, that the, the code enforcement was that they had tied it.
It seems to be a reasonable location.
Yeah. So, so is there any issue? I want to verify, there's no issue for us to just leave it as a, as a practice that we've been doing for a while until we write code on it?
Yeah, as long as I have council direction to not, I mean, the code's silent on it, which means it's not permissible.
Okay. Council Buyers? Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I don't think we haven't done that in the past, is what I mean. I think we've, we've allowed anybody who's asked to hang a banner there has been able to. There's been tons of banners over the years at that spot. And I even have a, I think I have a photograph of me standing there with, next to a banner. So. Yeah, I'm just suggesting we just, just keep doing it the way we're doing it. I don't think there's a big rush of, I don't think we're going to get overwhelmed by. Right. We can put it on the long list of community development. I don't think it's going to happen anytime soon, is why I don't want to pull the plug on everybody. Council Postizo?
I'll defer to the city attorney, but I, I don't think you can regulate content.
We could also, we could also put a stop to it at any time. I mean, if we can put a stop to it tonight, we can put a stop to it at any time. So if it became problematic, you could bring it back, right? And we can just say, we're not doing this anymore until the code is written? Is that, I'm just looking for, is that true?
That's true.
Okay, Council Kreider?
Is it true that you couldn't, would it be regulating content to say sort of the events, or I don't know if the green bag is considered an event, but it's serve the community, like you're promoting something that's serving, rather than just like putting up a sign as recently happened over and through?
I can't give you a definitive answer without doing a little research. My gut tells me that we, we, we can put some limitations on the content. Something that would be salacious, probably, we can say no to. There's a question whether, and, and it really needs to be resolved by the planning commission as we revise this sign ordinance. What about commercial signs? That's maybe a more likely problem. And do you want a commercial sign there? And there's another issue about traffic safety. Is that a good place for a sign in terms of traffic safety?
That was the one thing I brought up, was I, you know, I don't, if there's a traffic safety issue, there's, it's a non-starter. So I am familiar with sign ordinances, and there's banners, banner sign ordinances in Ashland that I, I, you know, and they are, they are restricted. And we all, we currently have a temporary sign code that allows business, commercial entities to have a, a temporary sign for fourteen days in, in, in place of an incoming permanent sign. So there are, there are temporary sign ordinances, and they are specific to commercial, but they are also qualifying by saying that you have to, you have a incoming permanent sign coming in. So I think we're covered there already. And, and there are, you know, there are criteria for temporary banners in other cities. I don't think this is, I don't think, I don't think coming up with a reasonable, coming up with a reasonable code is the issue. It's just what do we do in the meantime?
Right.
So I would just say, let's, I, I would, if, if it were up to me, if I were the only one voting, I would vote for just going with the, the practice we've been practicing for years. And, and then allow while, and direct staff to, to queue it up in the code revisions. And if it gets problematic, to bring it back. And I would, and wouldn't we all be comfortable leaning on Gary's discretion about what problematic actually is? I'm open to other suggestions. That's just one suggestion. I just don't know that we've ever had a problem with that. I, we can wrap this up here. Is there any other suggestions? Counselor Perry Miller?
Not a suggestion, and this might be an impossible question to answer, but what would the timeline be potentially to get it through planning? I'm looking at Kristen. I don't know if you could speak to what a potential timeline would be?
Well, there, I, there might be another option. If the city, if the city were to have a banner area, and we have that, and we actually rented that out, we would have that policy in that area that we wouldn't need to rewrite a whole code for, for a banner, that we could just have it, have a place where people can hang their banners and they could rent it for a week or two or three, or however they, however they wanted it. But we would have to, city would have to manage that. That's another option, rather than rewriting the ordinance for just banners.
Well, and we do have that. I mean, we, the city hangs up banners.
Right.
Right above here, so we, we.
And other cities do that. Unfortunately, we need a lift every time we do it, so it would be pretty costly.
Right, I mean, I, you're right, but I mean, my, my point being that, I, I wouldn't designate that as the space for, for the public. But we, we have a practice of, of allowing banners, is my larger point. And, and there are clips apparently on those bollards for the purpose of, one second, Robert, for the purpose of hanging banners, some, so it's, it's, it's like this established practice. Robert, if you want to come forward and add to this conversation, you're welcome to.
Thank you. I just want to give a little history on that location. So when the Roundabout Project went in and those bollards got put up, D-rings were installed on those bollards for the specific reason of hanging community banners on. City took precedence. If we needed to hang a banner, we would remove theirs. Pre-COVID and pre-fire, they would come in and get a permit. It would go to the city manager, the city manager would approve the signage or not. I don't know that one ever got denied. Then it would come to Public Works. I don't know that one ever got denied. Then it would come to Public Works. Public Works would actually hang the banner to make sure it got hung properly. There wasn't any safety issues. Um, that changed during COVID to restrict, uh, person-to-person contact where we allowed the, uh, groups to go ahead and hang their own banner. And it's just, that's been the common practice ever since. But we don't, we've never allowed any community to hang banners up here. That's only been for city business. That one was installed specifically for, uh, community events to be able to hang their banners there.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's really helpful. Yeah. So we would have to issue a temporary. And that must be the permit I saw today. Yeah. Council buyers? Yeah, I, um, as, so, you mean as a temporary measure? Because I think that's already in place as a temporary measure. That's, it sounds to me like that's already in place. It's a temporary measure.
Well, I, I guess direction to establish a permit system would be a way to resolve it.
Going back, we'd just go back to.
There is an unofficial permit system as with the temporary use permit for the, for the banners.
I just want to propose one more time because I think we can actually close this thing by just directing staff to continue the, the current practice, which is to, uh, issue a temporary permit utilizing that space while we write a code for it. And I am, I, I, if it's, if it makes it more comfortable for you guys to, to end that motion, provide you with discretion. Yeah.
Looks fun.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. Thank you for the history. That solved the whole thing for us. Um, all right. Anybody want to give a motion? So it would be, uh, have you got it? Have you got the motion? All right. Good. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, um, direct staff to continue the practice as established, uh, while developing code as time and capacity allows. Did we want to add giving, I, I mean, I just think it's a given that staff has discretion. Right. Yep. Perfect. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Only in a small town does the banner issue take, uh, longer than the water issue. Okay, I think that's fair. Conversation number four. Um, discussion of eligibility and appointment process, council. They can see staff.
Okay, uh, as you know, Council Clark has resigned, uh, and I, this is on the agenda for direction from the council on what process you wish to follow to fill the vacancy. Um, the, uh, uh, city charter provides for the method of filling vacancies by appointment. Uh, I believe the council in the past has had a timeline for, uh, accepting applications. Uh, we suggested here that if you wanted to follow that same process, that you establish an application deadline, perhaps of March 7th. It could be later. There's no requirement, uh, in the charter or the municipal code or in the Oregon revised statutes, uh, that, uh, you need to notice the vacancy. But you, uh, uh, may wish to follow that policy as good, good public policy. I put in the packet an example of the notice from the last time you had a vacancy.
And we, um, does it say, uh, it seems to me that I, I recall it being longer than two weeks. Was it? Uh, was it a two-week notice? Was, does it say in here that it? So we don't know the date the notice was made, so. The allergies. Does anybody want to? Offer, I mean, I, I like, I like notifying the public. I like giving access. Excuse me, guys. I don't have a cold. I have terrible allergies. I'll let you guys make the conversation.
Are you, is staff prepared to put everything out, uh, soon? Like if we?
We can get the notice out pretty quick. Yeah.
Yeah. Because sometimes it's two weeks, but then it doesn't, you know, but you're, but it, you don't get time to actually do that until two weeks from now. And then I know that there was a, um, a, I don't know if it was a recommendation, but a mention of, um, by our March 17th.
March, March 7th would be two weeks.
But the next meeting was.
You can pick whatever date you think is appropriate.
The interviews were.
The interviews would, uh.
Second meeting in March?
And the interviews would be March 13th.
I think it would actually be the 20th because council's the first and third. So it would be either on the 6th or the 20th. So we could always, uh, have the position open and then fill it on the 20th. I don't know how much staff time would be required to put those together. Um, I mean, I'd love to give, uh, folks as much time as possible. So I'm not sure how much time is needed for the, you know, filing to be closed before council. But I think a meeting appointment date of March 20th seems reasonable.
So back it up for March 20th and get the notice out right away. And go for a March 20th appointment.
Okay. Do you need, do you need direction?
Yeah, if you'd, uh, I would suggest a motion to immediately post the vacancy, uh, and establish, uh, uh, an application deadline to get on the March 20th agenda. Hector, the applications would need to come in by 13.
Question after. If it relates to the timeline, but I'll let you.
Council Kreider?
I don't know if Hector heard you, Gary. Sorry.
Hector, for a March 20th appointment date, interview and appointment date, would the deadline need to be March 13th to get on the agenda?
Correct. Uh, for, for it to be on the agenda, we would need it by the 13th. We'll release the agenda that week, either on the 14th or the 15th.
Would we also by the 20th meeting on the 6th or whatever that meeting is before that, need to, um, prepare questions for the interviews? I haven't done this process, but I know when I interviewed, there was questions.
Yeah. Um, and we adopted the questions. And I think they, they're probably somewhere. You'd probably find them somewhere.
We've got the questions in file. We may want to add some. I don't know.
Yeah. So bringing, bringing the questions, I, I'm hearing you say bring the questions to the March 6th meeting so that we can amend them if we want and adopt them.
All right. I'll put that on the agenda.
Great. Good call. Anything else on this? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Council buyers?
Second.
Um, we have a motion and a second to, uh, issue a notice of the city council vacancy for the city council seat six inviting qualified electors to apply for the vacancy with an application deadline of March, uh, March 13th. And with the interviews to be scheduled, followed by a possible appointment to fill the vacancy at the March 20th city council meeting. Did I get the dates right? Okay. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine is commissioner committee reports. Oh, Dave?
Mayor, related to that, the last item, I just want to remind you, since we have a vacancy, the quorum for the council is now three.
Yeah.
Uh, and that makes a difference in your conversations with each other and emails and so on. So just be cognizant of that until we get that position filled.
They'll be, uh, happy to know that Council Penamra has made sure we all knew that. On more than one occasion, I might add, uh, is our quorum, our, our in-house quorum. Instructor. All right, uh, ca- uh, commission and committee reports. Well, should we just start with you, Coet, and just go down the line?
Sure. Uh, so like I said before, uh, the talent public arts committee is excited to host an art open house type of event, um, which will feature, um, some of the local artists who, um, have their work currently up in the city hall lobby. And, um, T-PAC has also invited past artists to attend. Um, so we're very excited about that. Um, it will be on Sunday, March 10th, and I believe they're aiming for noon to three, but I can confirm that. Um, and it's open to the community and they're very excited. Um, I'm not sure if there are any other updates. That's mostly what they've been focusing on.
Great. Counselor buyers?
First, I just wanted to make sure that everyone who needs to be better with communication and note to the shipping of the February 1st meeting, um, 14 to 15. Um, just want to make sure that I'm following the protocol and making sure.
Would that include canceling the regular meeting and adding a special meeting? Thanks.
Then to follow up, uh, just because the first mission has been asking, um, where we are at with the adoption of the resolution to allow dog communication in Chuck Roberts. And whatever the update is, I'm happy to convey that.
Good job. It's like, that's the first I've heard of it. So there's a, something on your.
I didn't know it was on my, my, uh, to-do list.
Is it fair to say that we'll get an update at the next meeting?
Right.
Yeah. It's quite all right. Transition happens and. Serving the community well.
Yeah.
Great. Uh, Council Piscito?
Well, the planning commission had a study session where they explored the five prominent areas and the short paper is there's still a lot of questions and probably a lot of moving parts yet.
Uh, I would have reported the same. I just would add that, um, I was kind of excited to hear, it was, well, first of all, it was like the world's shortest study session. I, it was so, so fast. Um, but I, um, I was kind of excited to find out that we could look at moving the, um, the zone and, um, and there was potential, there was talk that it could potentially go along the highway, which, um, I think is worth further discussion at some point. It, uh, if there's that much conflict where it is, maybe along the highway is a better fit. So I don't know. I'd like to hear more about that. Council Greiter?
I don't have one.
No? Okay. Um, Penamra? Council Penamra?
Yeah, thanks. Um, the Together for Talent Committee met at the beginning of the month. We had, um, a marvelous presentation by, uh, Sharice Sadoriak. Um, um, and she does firewise in Ashland and, uh, the wildlife wildfire risk assessment program or RAP program. And it was, uh, the beginning of a conversation of what we might be able to, um, do in talent, uh, to help folks, uh, make their homes, uh, safer. Um, and, uh, there's a lot of volunteer, uh, interest, uh, coming from the committee on that. Um, the other thing that we have coming up, which I'm wondering about is, uh, I think, uh, we have, uh, the spring into recycling, um, event, uh, which used to be recycling roundup, but I kind of wanted to rename it, uh, scheduled for April 13th. And I think that was, uh, before we understood that, uh, April 14th would be the Arbor Day, um, celebration. Um, and because there is, uh, I think we have had some help, certainly a ton of help from, from Hector, uh, last time and as well as help from Public Works. Um, I, I guess we might need to revisit that. So I just wanted to flag that. And, um, yeah, and finally we have a, 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 a potential new member, um, Nancy McKinnis, who serves on the school board, has, um, applied and she came to the meeting. But, um, the, the committee didn't have time to, um, sit and chat with her. So that's, uh, scheduled for, uh, the next meeting. And that's it.
Great. Thank you. That's everybody. Um, then the next item on the agenda is other business and future agenda items. Um, I think the only other business we have tonight is from the earlier, uh, speakers on non-agenda items asking about zoning, um, or rezoning. And, uh, so can we reach out to them and explain to them, uh, give them information on the process and the steps for that? Because it's, it starts at. So are they going to file an application?
I inform them that.
Do you want to get on the microphone? Because, yeah.
I told them they had the opportunity of asking the council to direct staff to go forward with a rezone. But I also told them if they did it on their own, that it would be much quicker. It wouldn't be a priority for the city to move forward and we probably wouldn't get it done in their timeline.
And, um, so, uh, I guess the only concern I have is that us directing staff to move forward with rezoning would imply that we're approved, that we approve of, 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 of getting that, of getting the rezoning done where, where I, the other way would actually come to us as a recommendation from the planning commission.
Well, it would have to still go through a planning commission. They would have to recommend approval or denial either way.
Yeah.
Staff would probably recommend, make a recommendation of some sort. I'm not sure that we would even recommend for both of them to be resumed.
Yeah. Um, does the council want to, I mean, does the council want to direct staff to move forward on this? Council Perry Miller?
I mean, I feel very comfortable with the fact that you've talked to them.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't have assumed that based on the testimony that they gave. So I feel comfortable with them having the knowledge that they can move through this process with you.
Um, I don't.
feel the need for us to take action at this time.
Great. Anybody else feel differently? All right. Thank you, Kristen. Written communications. Does anybody else have anything, future agenda? All right, written communications. There are none. Executive session. So at this time. The city council will now meet in executive session on ORS 192.6602H, which allows the council to, to meet in executive session to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. So with that, we will go into executive section and.
deadline 39. We're back in regular session and thank you. We're back in regular session. It's 9:39. There were no decisions and this meeting is adjourned.
Don't need to collect these, but I always collect whatever we have in the executive session.